Session on a matter that came up in a last-minute kind of way that we just had to deal with. So, we do apologize. We welcome all of you and glad you're here and we're sorry that you had to wait. We'll begin, call the meeting to order at 7:30. All members are present, and we'll begin with the transmitting of Treasury Warrants 43, 43A, 44, 44A, 45, and 45A. Do we have a motion?
Moved.
Second.
Made in second. It all in favor? Unanimous? We'll move to the approval of the minutes of January 28, 2013. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve the minutes of January 28, 2013.
Second.
Made in second. Anything further? All in favor? Unanimous? Which brings us to our scheduled appointments. Our first scheduled agenda item, which have been scheduled for 7 o'clock, is the recognition of Ryan Clark, and it's regarding the Boston Globe Scholastic Art Award. Ryan, are you here? Good evening, Ryan. How are you? Jeff, if you want, why don't I read this and you can step up here? And we have for Ryan a citation from the town, which reads, "To Ryan W. Clark in recognition of your achievement in photography as recipient of the Gold Key Boston Globe Scholastic Art Award and Silver Medal National Scholastic Art and Writing Award, and is presented on the 13th day of May 2013." And it's signed by myself as the chairman and Jeff Hall as the manager. So, Mr. Hall, if you could do the honors and have a hearty handshake to Mr. Clark for his fine work.[103.54][103.54][applause] Ryan, Jeff would love the opportunity to take a photo with the manager.[120.32][120.32][applause] Congratulations again, Ryan. And this time, we also would like to recognize the Wilmington High School Lamp Lighters Drama Guild regarding the Massachusetts Educational Theatre Guild Finalist High School Festival of One Act Plays. And I see that we have a number of students here this evening, looks like proud family members as well. It's our expectation here to recognize each of the individuals that's involved in the guild and invite you individually, one by one, to join us at the front. Mr. Hall will present you each with the citation, and if you could, remain standing and perhaps start a line from down this end. We'll have everybody come up and then we'll try and take a photo of the entire group with Mr. Hall. So, with that, why don't I read one of the citations and then we'll go through each of the individuals who will receive one. And the citations that we will be presenting read as follows. It's from the town of Wilmington, and it's to each individual student. It's in recognition of your achievement as a member of Wilmington High School Lamp Lighters Drama Guild, Massachusetts Educational Theatre Guild Finalist High School Festival of One Act Plays, and it's for the play Still Falls The Rain. And I'm looking around at it. There's so many folks here. I don't see any individuals from the school department that we need to recognize, but let's get through this list and get the congratulations that are in order. Thank you. I'll set that one aside. So, if we could invite to the front, Mr. Hall, if you would take these. Rachel M. Alatalo. Is Rachel here?[260.14][260.14][applause] May Lou Barnum.[286.44][286.44][applause] Stephanie M. Canty.[305.22][305.22][applause] Kevin J. Dunn.[330.72][330.72][applause] Julia S. Farraro.[349.03][349.03][applause] Okay, thank you. Elizabeth A. Harvey.[359.72][359.72][applause] Morgan A. M. Higgs.[368.87][368.87][applause] Sylvan J. Hun.[377.69][377.69][applause] Caroline M. Johnston.[386.12][386.12][applause] Jeff, do you want me to keep going or just get two lines going?
Sure.
Okay. Say Caroline Johnston.
Yeah.
Jessica E. Casparian.[405.12][405.12][applause] Ashley E. Lacambria.[413.56][413.56][applause] Natalie J. LaFleur.[420.91][420.91][applause] James C. Lawrenson.[428.62][428.62][applause] Erica K. Lloyd.[470.62][470.62][applause] William A. McKinnon.[478.62][478.62][applause] Shannon E. Molton.[486.25][486.25][applause] Michelle J. Murray.[501.31][501.31][applause] Christina M. Price.[524.58][524.58][applause] Christopher R. Romano.[532.34][532.34][applause] Kerry A. Ryan.[540.12][540.12][applause] Rachel E. Sanato.[548.29][548.29][applause] Shannon E. Sullivan.[571.84][571.84][applause] Justin M. Serret.[579.41][579.41][applause] I'm sorry, Justine. Justine M. Serret, my apologies.[587.58][587.58][applause] And Nicole Tetrow.[608.58][608.58][applause] Amy Lynn Warner.[616.25][616.25][applause] And a special round of applause for the writer, as well as the performer, Katie B. And I'd just ask all of the students to remain where you are so that we can also invite up advisor and director Jason Luciana. Jason here?
Yeah.
Couldn't be here, okay. So, Bev, if you could please take care of some photos before we let these ladies and gentlemen.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to just add, you know, this is, having a son who is in the drama club in Bill Recker where I live, I can really attest to the effort that goes into a production like this because, believe me, he's been in some productions and there's a lot of work on the part of the students, timeless hours spent in rehearsal and preparation. There's also an awful lot of effort amongst the parents, both in terms of preparing the stage sets and just the shuttling back and forth. So, it's an incredible effort and certainly both the students and their parents should be incredibly proud of the achievement.[705.87][705.87][applause]
wants to take a moment to offer individual congratulations. And perhaps I can start the ball rolling with first just reiterating what the manager has said. Congratulations. It's a wonderful achievement that all of you have accomplished, and we're very, very proud of you as a town, and we know that you have many bright things in your future. So, we hope that you enjoy this, but that you also remember that you have many successes ahead of you. So, congratulations.[769.03][769.03][applause]
Yeah, I'll be brief. I don't want to keep you any longer, and sorry again for being late coming in. I'll simply say thank you very much for representing the town of Wilmington so well. You go out into the surrounding communities and perform and compete and do what you do, but you are, people judge Wilmington, by the way, that you conduct yourselves, and you couldn't have made us more proud, as the chairman just said. So, thank you very much. Go on and continue to compete and succeed, whether it be through drama or whatever else. We're so blessed in this town to have such a glut of great programs. We had the great honor of honoring the hockey team a couple of weeks ago, and now this just takes it another notch up. We're really, truly honored. I feel very, very lucky to be able to pay tribute to your achievements tonight. So, congratulations again and thank you very much.[833.23][833.23][applause]
Just want to say a little bit more of what has already been said, just to offer my sincere congratulations to each of you and your families. Obviously, you've put a lot of hard work and dedication into this, and it certainly is quite a production, and to know that it was written by one of the performers here. This is one of the highlights of being in this role, is to be able to connect with students, families, and residents, and you really have made the town proud. So, thank you very much for being here and congratulations.[863.75][863.75][applause]
Yeah, once again, the town manager couldn't say it any better. The only thing I'd like to say is you always read about, see in the newspaper, all the negative and bad things that young adults do. Not often do you see the good, and there's a lot of good happening here, and the town of Wilmington is very proud of you. Thank you.[882.56][882.56][applause]
Yeah, I agree with everything that's been said. Congratulations for all your hard work, and thank you to all the parents for, like the town manager said, shuttling you around, doing whatever you have to do, setting up sets, but it's just another shining light of the town of Wilmington and the town of Wilmington youth. And I appreciate all you guys have done in making us proud. Congratulations.[907.62][907.62][applause]
We have business to continue with, and folks should feel welcome to stay, should not feel obligated to stay. So, whatever floats your boat.[924.41][924.41][laughter]
Just want to say a little bit more of what has already been said, just to offer my sincere congratulations to each of you and your families. Obviously, you've put a lot of hard work and dedication into this, and it certainly is quite a production, and to know that it was written by one of the performers here, this is one of the highlights of being in this role, is to be able to connect with students, families, and residents, and you really have made the town proud. So, thank you very much for being here and congratulations.[953.75][953.75][applause]
Yeah, once again, the town manager couldn't say it any better. The only thing I'd like to say is you always read about, see in the newspaper, all the negative and bad things that young adults do. Not often do you see the good, and there's a lot of good happening here, and the town of Wilmington is very proud of you. Thank you.[972.56][972.56][applause]
Yeah, I agree with everything that's been said. Congratulations for all your hard work, and thank you to all the parents for, like the town manager said, shuttling you around, doing whatever you have to do, setting up sets, but it's just another shining light of the town of Wilmington and the town of Wilmington youth. And I appreciate all you guys have done in making us proud. Congratulations.[997.62][997.62][applause]
We have business to continue with, and folks should feel welcome to stay, should
First of all, I'd like to thank the entire membership. And Judy, it was only forty-something votes. It wasn't a landslide, but, you know, I appreciate that. Thank you, you know? And I've always said, if as long as you win by one vote, that you got three years to work on your resume. I appreciate it. And I'd like to thank all the nice, kind words from the entire membership. And it was echoed here earlier, each and every single person up here could do a good job, Mr. Chairman. There's no doubt in my mind that Mr. Shampoo, Judy, Lou, or even Mike Newhouse has demonstrated an outstanding job. And I hope to continue that way. And I can honestly say, Mike, I think you've done an outstanding job. And I've said to you, not only publicly, but personally, you won my wife over. She thinks you've done a great, great job. She might say, I don't know, maybe you should have kept it to Mike Newhouse. We'll see. So the jury's still out on that, I gather. But, but I really appreciate the vote of confidence. And I really look forward to moving forward, working on behalf of the town, and continue to making sure, make a priority that that high school is built, and we need to do whatever it takes. And we've done that. We've demonstrated that. Not only that, we've demonstrated in hiring a new town manager. And it's like, Jeff, he was the assistant for many, many years, and he's done an outstanding job, and his unanimous support for Jeff. And I think the town is in a better place. We have great public safety. We've got a great chief of police, fire chief. The town's done well, and the town has millions of dollars in reserves. So things have gone good, and I think that will continue that pace. So once again, I really appreciate the vote of confidence. And right now, I'll turn the meeting to the town manager under Communications. Jeff?
Okay, Mr. Chairman, the first item under Communications is a memorandum to the board from me concerning a recent decision that was offered by Superior Court Judge Kimberly Budd. The, she issued a ruling that denied the motion filed by Mr. O'Reilly's legal counsel to remand the case. This is the case involving the appeal of the final order of conditions on the high school. The judge denied the motion to remand the case to DEP and allowed the town's motion to rely on DEP's final order of conditions. Mr. O'Reilly's counsel is required to file a motion for judgment on the pleadings within thirty days of the judge's order, which was rendered on May 6th. The town's counsel in return must respond to that motion within thirty days, and then a hearing is scheduled on July 18th of this year. This judgment appears, in my estimation, to indicate a recognition that time is of the essence in determining the merits of the appeal, and that the administrative, administrative needs, administrative needs go forward. So I think this is a favorable ruling for the The next item on the, under Communications is a memorandum from Senator Tar. This is with regard to an authorization for 300 million in Chapter 90 funding, and is attached to that vote as a preamble that would make the funding immediately available upon authorization or vote of the House of Representatives and the governor. If such a, if this legislation is approved, Wilmington would receive 1,147,870, which is an increase from the current fiscal 13 amount of 765,247. Just by way of information on that, in the event that the additional funds are authorized, the superintendent of Public Works has indicated that in addition to the projects that are currently slated for this year, which include paving sections of Andover Street from Route 62 to Johnspine Road, Eames Street from Main Street to Woburn Street, Grove Ave from Winchell Road to Burnap Street, and Wing Road from Woburn Street to the end of Wing Road. In addition to those projects which are already scheduled, the superintendent would look at some of the residential roads, which are in need of paving as well. So hopefully, the legislature will make a final determination on this funding quickly. The board has correspondence...
Mr. Hall, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
On that last memo, I just wanted to ask the question, and I think it's corroborated by previous conversation on this, on this point. The, the funding on the, the 300 million Chapter 90 that would come to each city and town, including, of course, Wilmington, that's over the course of the next three years, true? In other words, we will be able to budget for and plan more, more effectively for the next coming construction seasons than we have in the past? Is that an accurate interpretation of this?
This funding that is being considered at the moment is just for fiscal 2014.
Okay, so it's one year. What was, so this is not related to the three-year bond bill that they talked about?
It is, although it's my understanding they've, in order to assist the communities, are looking to provide funding for this current fiscal year at the moment, rather than continue to have multiple funding year tied up.
Okay.
We have correspondence from Holly McLennan, the Associate General Counsel from the Mass School Building Authority. The correspondence is directed to Superintendent Benton. This is with respect to the project funding agreement under the Accelerated Repair Program for the North Intermediate School. Essentially, this letter lays out the various requirements that the town must meet within the next thirty days in order to remain eligible for the funding and in order to get the agreement signed by MSBA. So there are several different steps that we will be taking in the next few weeks to ultimately result in getting this project funding agreement signed, and which will allow us to continue with the final design of the windows and get those ready for installation, which would be scheduled for summer of 2014. We have correspondence from the Department of Environmental Protection. This is with respect to Massachusetts Electric Vehicles Incentive Program Workshops. DEP is promoting the use of electric vehicles and is holding a series of workshops across the state to provide municipalities with information, both about the vehicles and the costs associated with them, as well as the charging stations that would be required. And apparently, there are certain incentives that DEP is going to be making available to cities and towns that take advantage of this program. One of the sessions that is being offered, one of these workshops, is actually going to be held here in Wilmington, and we will be represented at that meeting.
Could I humbly request that, that after that time, after that meeting, that either you or someone that did attend it, maybe give us a brief overview of what this program represents, and whether or not there's a potential for Wilmington to take advantage of some of the programs DEP is offering? I'm interested in learning more about this, I guess is what it boils down to.
That's, that's fine. I will see that a memorandum, or if necessary, probably would be Dawn on a site, or perhaps Jamie McGoldy that would be attending will come in.
Fine. Thank you.
We also have correspondence from, actually, this is a letter directed to James Trombley from me. He's the Chair of the Republican Town Committee, and the letter is advising him that under Mass General Law, Chapter 51, Section 15, Patricia, Priscilla Ward, her term as a, on the Board of Registars is expiring, and is, she's interested in continuing to serve. And the letter is just asking him for any comment. We have not received a response to the, to the letter. We have correspondence from Paul Bruce. The, this is with respect to the constable position. Just indicates, I would like to personally thank your office, along with the Board of Selectmen, for allowing me to serve as a constable for the town of Wilmington. I'm formally requesting that the Board of Selectmen renew my constable license for 2013-14 year. Thank you in advance for your time and consideration. Also, another gentleman, Ronald DiGigorio, sends a letter to the Board of Selectmen. Please reappoint me as constable for the town of Wilmington, Mass. I have been a constable in Wilmington since August 26, 1992. My bond is current, and I am still at the same address, 11 Merritt Road, Burlington, Mass. I retired as a Superior Court officer from the Superior Court after 28 years, and will be doing constable work full-time. I am also bonded as a constable in Medford, Somerville, Woburn, and Cambridge. Thank you for your consideration.
So I believe at this time, if there's nothing outstanding relative to anything of these three individuals, they've been constables in the past. So if there's a motion from the board to reappoint the names as stated by the town manager?
I'll make that motion now. I thought we were going to make it, is that part of the other list? Okay, no, I'll make the motion, we'll appoint the three.
Are we doing this right now?
Yeah, okay.
I'll second that.
Motion made by Selectmen, I see Beverly shaking her head. No, no, seriously, speak right up. Have we, correct?
The process should be done later on because the poll is still on, some have restrictions, some, some could start in Wilmington, some have restrictions. So the process should be done with all of them.
Okay, very good. No, no, we want to withdraw the motion, and it will just continue.
We also have a letter from John Rowan. I wish, I wish to apply for reappointment as constable for the town of Wilmington. I have been a Wilmington constable for 25 years and wish to continue serving my clients. My constable fees, although not that much, have always been paid on time, as well as my quarterly reporting. My current appointment expires April 30, 2013. And that, Mr. Chairman, is the last of the correspondence.
Very good. So we'll take it up at this point, with any restrictions.
Mr. Chairman, perhaps, this is a function of reorganizing in the middle of a meeting. What Mr. Hall and I had put on the agenda was to take up the appointment of the constables along with various other appointees of the Board of Selectmen under Agenda Item 10. And I think that would enable us to recite some of those restrictions.
Okay, very good. All right. I was not aware of that. All right. We'll take that up under category number 10. Thanks. Thank you, Michael. All right, Jeff, correct.
Okay, under Board to Consider, we have the execution of the collective bargaining agreement between the town of Wilmington and the New England Police Benevolent Association Local 13 Supervisors. This contract would extend for the period of July 1, 2013, through June 30, 2014. So it'd be a one-year contract.
As stated earlier by the chair, we were in executive session, talking about real properties, and relative to the agreement before us. Now we're in an open session. Is there a motion from any of the board members to approve what's before the board this evening?
I've moved to approve the collective bargaining agreement.
Motion made by Selectmen Newhouse, seconded by Selectmen Smaglia. All those in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, what I, it's your pleasure, I can have these, ask that the board members sign them after the meeting, or do you want to have them sign during the course of the meeting here, or?
Each of the contracts, we have five contracts that will require signature.
We can do it through them.
Okay.
We'll multitask.
Yeah. I'll just send it down to this way. That way, anytime we put a meeting, right? Thank you. Continuing on?
Okay, we have Board to Consider, request of Sharon George, Town Clerk, to appoint additional election workers for the calendar year 2013. As you know, we have the election for the Senate position formerly held by John Kerry. That election's coming up on June 25th. Sharon is recommending two individuals, Jean Gilson, 13 Manning Street, and Linda Constantino, 26 Blanchard Road.
Make the motion, we approve the request by Town Clerk Sharon George.
Second.
Motion made by Selectmen Smaglia, seconded by Selectmen O'Connell. All those in favor? Both unanimous. Thank you.
Also, we have a Board to Consider, request of Dorothy Laffarillo to use the town common on Sunday, June 9, 2013, at 9:00 a.m. for the purpose of a fundraiser, a boot camp for Jeff Bowman. Jeff Bowman was one of the unfortunate victims in the Marathon bombing, suffered loss of both his legs. And this is, apparently, Mr. Bowman is a cousin. So Ms. Laffarillo is looking to have a fundraiser. It would be a one-hour boot camp, so to speak, to raise money for his ongoing recovery.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just for the record, Mrs. Laffarillo was here. She just kind of indicated she had to leave, but I just want to let you know she was here.
All right, very good. All right. Before the board, whatever is your motion to her for the request? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Selectmen Newhouse?
Second.
Is there a second? There's a second by Selectmen Smaglia. All those in...
If I may, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I just wanted to make the comment so that we recognize this going forward. First of all, we had a, I think, a somewhat similar request from a for-profit enterprise recently, and we denied that request. I remember that I had expressed concern that it was a for-profit enterprise, and I think that other members shared that concern. Be that as it may, you know, given the circumstances of this charitable venture, I'm inclined to support this, even though I'm, I'm somebody who pauses whenever we give permission to use the common, to really make sure we're doing something that makes sense in the big picture. So I just wanted to point out that, that distinction from the previous vote that we took.
I'm totally in agreement with you. We've done that for many, many years. And given the situation, it's totally understandable. So there was a motion by Selectmen Newhouse, seconded by Selectmen Smaglia. All those in, I'm sorry, Judy, do you want to say something?
Just, just a question, just in terms of, I know they're indicating the common, and I want to make sure that my comments are in the right context. I'm fully supportive of the fundraising. I'm just, based on the turnout and traffic and a crosswalk to get people over to the common, is there any sort of recommendation that goes along with it? Will we need a detail for this, potentially, you know, just based on foot traffic over to the common, safety-wise?
I will have a conversation with Mrs. Laffarillo to try to get a, an indication of how many individuals she expects. I think that would be something that, depending upon the number of people she expects, something to coordinate with the police department, certainly.
Because, you know, is, when does the, is the farmer's market, when does, is that...
The farmer's market begins June 16th, I believe, is, that Sunday. So it'd be a week later.
Because I just, you know, I don't want to get us off topic, but I just didn't know with the parking being right there in the student parking lot, with that patch of grass, would that be potentially a safer environment, that they could just park and walk right onto a patch of grass, versus having to cross Middlesex onto traffic in the center of where we have the high school construction on the other side? I don't want to be too over-analytical on it, but just questioning if that's the best location.
If, I can't remember who seconded the motion, but I certainly would, as the maker of the motion, offer as part of that, that the manager and police department make available that additional area as part of the motion, and entrust the manager and the police department to work through the details as the details might warrant.
Perfect.
Second, I was going to mention to the manager, seek guidance from the chief of police, as we've done in the past, relative to any large gathering, so being that, Newhouse is the maker of the motion, and definitely incorporate that, to seek the police, the public safety. Seconded by Selectmen Smaglia, and that's a good point, Judy, that you brought up.
Some of those details involve places of worship. Nine o'clock on a Sunday is, is a gathering time for a number of worship places right, right along that strip. So just be, I'm sure the chief will be aware of that when you speak to him as well, but we want to be conscious of that.
And I'm sure you got all the concerns of the full membership. All right, good. All those in favor? All those in favor? Unanimous, Beverly. Thank you.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, I would like to challenge my fellow selectmen here to go to this day on, I will be away that day. But what's the date on it again? I will be away, but I challenge us all to go there.
That's right, we'll take your check.
Noted. All right, great, Jeff.
Next, under the Board to Consider is a request from Jennifer De Feo to have a neighborhood block party to be located on 19 Liberty, from 19 Liberty Street to 25 Liberty Street on Saturday, June 22, from 2:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m.
And usually the standard, they'll work it out with the police department, and will notify them in DPW?
Yes.
Like we've done in the past. And given that, if there's a motion for the request?
Given the same precautions and preparations and communication between the party and the police department and all other parties, I would move to approve the block party request by Jennifer De Feo.
And is there a second?
Second.
There's a second by Selectmen Newhouse, motion from Selectmen Shampoo, second by Selectmen Newhouse. All those in favor? Vote unanimous, Beverly. Thank you. Brings us to number 10.
Board to Consider appointments and reappointments to the Board of Appeals, Board of Registars, Council for the Arts, Council for the Arts Advisory Board, Fence Viewer, Town Council, and Constables. So what I can do is just read the list, and then you can go from there. To the Board of Appeals, five-year term expiring 2018, Daniel Veerman. Board of Registars, three-year term to expire 2016.
Do you want to take one at a time? We'll go to Mr. Veerman, then we'll continue on by a vote? Is that how we're going to do that?
Do it all as?
Want to do it all as one? I don't have an issue with that. I will save some time. We'll do it all as one unless somebody wants to take something out of line. All right, fine, Jeff.
So the next one would be Board of Registars, Priscilla Ward. This term to expire 2016. Council for the Arts, two-year term to expire 2015. Linda Loy. There is one vacancy as well that we'll be looking to fill. Council for the Arts Advisory Board, one-year term to expire 2014. Jane Crane. Fence Viewers, one-year term to expire 2014. Anthony Pronsky, Jr., and John Spalding. Town Council, one-year term to expire June 30, 2014. John Foskett as the lead council for Deutsch Williams, Brooks, Durencis, and Holland.
That's a pleasure of the Board. We can do this as a blanket vote for all the appointments as described by the town manager. If there's a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Selectmen Newhouse, second by Selectmen Samaglia. All those in favor? The vote unanimous. Thank you.
Then on the next page, we have Constables, one-year terms to expire 2014. Paul Bruce, Jr., Alan C. Hunter, Charles Rooney, Jr., John Bridges, Jr. Just note that Mr. Bridges, the restriction there is not to solicit clients, authority to serve civil process for clients who need services in Wilmington. Similar restriction to Ronald De Gregorio, John Milano, and also David Moskovitz, William Pepacelli, same restriction, John Rowan, same restriction, and also Anthony Seiya, and William Zempel all have that same restriction, not to solicit clients, authority to serve civil process for clients who need services in Wilmington.
All right, thank you. And I appreciate that, Beverly. I didn't realize this is what was happening on item number 10, so I appreciate you bringing that to my attention.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to appoint and reappoint the constables as outlined by the town manager, and in addition, Ellen G. Davis Sawyer in connection with their duties as animal control officer.
Second.
There's a motion by Selectmen Newhouse, second by Selectmen O'Connell. All those in favor? Are unanimous. Thank you.
Next are the Board to Consider ratification of the town manager's appointments and reappointments for the Commission on Disabilities, Historical Commission, and Permanent Building Committee. The appointments that I'm proposing to the Commission on Disabilities, Frank Boddy, Joseph Francesca, Jr., and then to the Historical Commission, Bonnie Smith and Stephen Laurensen. To the, the Historical Commission has one unexpired term which will expire in 2014. That is the position that Carolyn Harris held. She is, as you know, stepped down. Permanent Building Committee, a three-year term to expire 2016, Joseph Perella, Jr.
Thank you. These are town manager appointments, and they need to be ratified by the Board of Selectmen. Is the motion to ratified?
So moved.
Motion made by Selectmen Shampoo. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Selectmen O'Connell. All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you.
And then I, we have town manager appointments to various boards, committees, and commissions. Mr. Chairman, the first Animal Control Officer, one-year term to expire 2014, Ellen Sawyer. The Animal Inspector, one-year term to expire 2014, Ellen Sawyer. Building Inspector, one-year term to expire 2014, John Spalding, and Peter Maggie, local inspector. Carter Lecture Fund Committee, three-year term to expire 2016, Adele Passmore and Julie Dotton. Cemetery Commission, a three-year term to expire 2016, Cynthia McHugh. Conservation Commission, three-year term to expire 2016, Frank Ingram, Donald Pearson, Michael McInnis. Conservation Commission, we do have an unexpired term that is currently vacant. We'll be looking to fill that position, and I'll be presenting a recommendation or a, an announcement on that position hopefully in the next few weeks. Elderly Services Commission, three-year term to expire 2016, John King, Jeanette Albert, and Thomas Mills. Jeanette Albert and Thomas Mills will be new to the commission. Electrical Inspector, one-year term to expire 2014, Frederick Sutter and Arthur Kelly as the alternate. Gas Inspector, one-year term to expire 2014, Paul Raffey, and John Maitek is the alternate. Board of Health, three-year term to expire 2016, James Ficcello. Library Trustee, three-year term to expire 2016, Donald Pearson. There is one vacancy remaining, and again, I will be looking to fill that, and we'll announce that position as soon as we have an individual. Middlesex Canal Commission, two-year term to expire 2015, Betty Bigwood, Michael McInnis, Neil Devens, alternate. Planning Board, five-year term to expire 2018, James Banda, Jr. Plumbing Inspector, one-year term to expire 2014, Paul Raffey and John Maitek as the alternate. Public Wayer, one-year term to expire 2014, Paul Anderson, Stephen Stella, and David Shagru. Recreation Commission, three-year term to expire 2016, Charles Biondo and Mark Kennedy. Veterans Agent, one-year term expires 2014, Lou Semeglia, IV. Veterans Grave Officer, one-year term to expire 2014, Lou Semeglia, IV. Water and Sewer Commission, three-year term to expire 2016, Joseph Barello. Wire Inspector, one-year term to expire 2014, Frederick Sutter and Arthur Kelly as the alternate. And the Auxiliary, the Auxiliary Police, we have three-year terms to expire 2016, Peter Burnell, Jr., Stephen Kane, Mario Demeco, Charles Holman, Sr., and Lieutenant Bradford Naughtner.
All right, thank you, Mr. Manager. Number 13, Public Comments. Any public comments? No public comments. Wow, that's great. Let's continue on. Any new business or committee reports? And I'll start at this side of the table?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, two things. First of all, I had the opportunity to go to a fundraiser at the Wilmington House of Pizza at around dinnertime, and I wanted to take this opportunity publicly to let people know that there are discs of the vigil that was held in Sean Collier's honor three weeks ago, four weeks ago, whatever that night was, and wanted to let people know that this disc exists. Paul Cardello was selling them, you know, for the purposes of raising money for the family at that, at that event, and they are available. Then I just also wanted to acknowledge Carolyn Harris and the fine work that she's done. I know that Mr. Howell was able to represent the Board at her celebration on Saturday, giving family commitments. I couldn't make it, but I wanted just publicly to thank her for her many years of service and all the great things that she's done for the town.
Very good.
Thank you.
I agree with Mr. Newhouse. Carolyn Harris has done so much for the town over so many years, and I too cannot make it Saturday, but she did Wilmington proud, and I wish her well in her retirement. Mr. Newhouse, I would just like to say directly to you, over the past year, it's been an amazing year, and a lot of things have been done and said on this board, and what you've done above and beyond is admirable. The passion you display for this town, and especially some of the, the people that have been at meetings that have kind of put things a little off-kilter, you've been able to get us on an even keel. And I appreciate all the work that you've done, especially above and beyond, but you were definitely a worthy chairman of this past year, and I appreciate it. And also, I'd just like to remind everybody, I believe this is the last meeting before Memorial Day, that the Memorial Day services, the parade steps off 10:00 at Market Basket, heads up Main Street, takes a left down Church Street, ends at the common, and people that would like to partake of the ceremony that we do at the Veterans Lot at Wildwood starts at 11:00. Thank you, and congratulations to you, Mr. Chairman.
I appreciate that. Thank you. Anybody else?
Yes, please. I wanted to also offer congratulations to Carolyn Harris. I was unable to attend as well. Certainly, the service and dedication to the town is certainly appreciated. I'd also like to say thank you to the residents that participated in our most recent town meeting. Wanted to thank this Board for working together to bring the Warren articles that we had to present to the town forward, and I also wanted to congratulate you, Jeff, on your first official town meeting as town manager. I thought you did an excellent job and looked like you've been doing it for the last 20-something years. So certainly, I appreciate the work that, all that went into that with you and your team and Beverly and all of the other assistance that you receive in your office. I just wanted to kindly interject here on the Yountile Farm on the important dates, if I may, that there was a meeting that was scheduled for Thursday, May 16, that has now been changed to May 30, which is that Thursday, 7:30, and I apologize, Jeff, that I didn't catch you before coming into open session to share that with you. So I just want to offer that at this time. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Judy.
Indeed, yeah. I had family obligations as well on Saturday, and I regretted that I wasn't able to get to Ms. Harris's retirement celebration, but I do want to wish her congratulations and Godspeed and a happy retirement, and thank her for her years of service. Also wanted to, like Judy said, say thank you and pay tribute to all of the residents who came out and spent a beautiful Saturday in the auditorium during town meeting, and compliment my colleagues and Jeff for getting us through that. And I would say, I think we might have even broken a recent year record in terms of getting out of there early in the day, so congratulations to that. I also want to just take a brief moment to publicly say congratulations to Steve Bjork, who was this year's recipient of the Good Guy Award, certainly a worthy recipient of it, and he is indeed a good guy, a friend of mine, and I was so glad to see him be identified as this year's recipient. And compliments go out to Mike Newhouse as well as to Jeff for their delivery of commentary that evening. It's a bit of a roast of the recipient as well as other people in the room, and both of them did a fine job. And I will say that Mr. Kyra, who was the master of ceremonies, did a remarkable job as emcee, so it was a good evening. Lastly, I'll simply say that on May 1, I had opportunity, or I took the opportunity, to attend a meeting of the Massachusetts Selectmen Association. It was held up in Westford, at the Westford Council on Aging. It was attended by a number of selectmen and representatives of towns and communities in the region. The keynote speaker, if you will, was Senator Eileen Donahue. I don't know exactly what district she represents, but she was there specifically talking about transportation finance and Chapter 90 funding. Jeff Beckwith, the Executive Director of the Mass Municipal Association, really took an ample amount of time to talk about where the MMA was serving the local municipalities in being an advocate and a voice at Capitol Hill and working with the Senate and the House on the budgetary process. So it was certainly enlightening, and again, it's my effort to just try to go and acquire as much knowledge and be able to contribute a voice to those parties on behalf of Wilmington. Additionally, one of our colleagues from Andover, Alex Vispoli, is a selectman out of Andover, approached me at the conclusion of the meeting, and in a, I guess, a colloquial sort of old-fashioned nod to tradition, he suggested that he wanted to reembark upon the tradition of perambulation. And I said, perambul what? I had never heard the term before. I was embarrassed to admit that. He said that, I guess, in our agrarian history, there was a tradition that held every year, if not maybe three years, where the selectmen from abutting communities would gather at specific posts, these granite posts that marked or denoted the borders of the towns, and they would go and it would, you know, it was a picture-taking kind of thing, and there'd be little mini celebrations and handshaking and that kind of stuff. And in fact, I believe there's actually a law on the books that says we're actually supposed to be doing this. So Alex thought it would be fun and interesting and something cool to do that he's embarking upon with his neighboring towns, and he said that he'd be reaching out to Jeff in his office to set up a time over the course of the summer for us as the Board of Selectmen to go and shake hands with their Board of Selectmen. So stay tuned for that. I think that would be something fun to do. That's my report.
All right, thank you. Once again, I'd like to thank the entire membership for your support in being chairman of this upcoming year, and there's no question in my mind, as we stated earlier, any of the members sitting up here could do an outstanding job running the chair. But I have to say to you, Mike Newhouse, on a personal note, I think you've done an outstanding job as chairman. You've been around a long time, and you're perhaps one of the best chairmans that we've had here, and you've kept everything in order, and I hope to continue in that framework, and obviously have some shoes to fill. I believe I can do that. However, you set a great example, and with a lot of class this year, we've all worked together, and I think you've done one of the best jobs up here, and I really appreciate the vote of confidence. And if I could say on a personal note, if you could, Mr. Manager, could you find out the status relative to the intersection of Glen Road and Route 62? Because on a personal note, it's gone on for a long time. My son, about last week, my son was involved in an accident. He was minding his business going on 62, and a vehicle came out of Glen Road, smacked him, stopped him right at the intersection. And I want to thank the Wilmington Police Department, the Fire Department, they had to use the jaws of life to get my son's girlfriend out. She had to get rushed out of the hospital. So the public safety did an outstanding job at that intersection, and once again, no one said it better than the former town manager, Mike Kyra. We have to set priorities. The state is spending millions of dollars doing all the signage on I-93 and markers, but yet, this thing has gone like unheard of, and it's, they really need to get their priorities straight. So if we need to send a letter, unfortunately, I don't know what's happened with the state letting, state representatives and our senator on this. I'm sure they're working on it, but we need to get an update. It's, I know Mrs. Kelly across the street, from time to time told us, there's always an accident or two every month, and we know Mrs. Kelly and the concern that they have. And when it, and I'm not saying it hits home, we've always supported it, but I think people need to know it. And once again, public safety did an outstanding job getting my son's girlfriend to that hospital, and it was a serious, serious accident, and the vehicle had to get towed. and it was a serious, serious accident, and the vehicle had to get towed, and it was, thank God, at the end of the day, everybody was safe, and that's the most important thing. And I'd appreciate it if we could try to see the update on that. And once again, I'd like to thank the membership. And Jeff, important dates, please. Thank you.
Sure, just before I get to the dates, I would just also mention to the Board that we just received notice at the end of last week that Carolyn Harris has been, is the recipient of an award from the Mass Historical Commission for her outstanding work in historic preservation, and the, she will be honored at the Mass Historical Commission's office, which I believe is at the JFK Library in Boston. That ceremony will be held on March, I'm sorry, May 23. Important dates, the May 19 is the Pan-Mass Challenge Kids Ride, Carter Lane, 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. May 19 is also the WCTV Cruisin' Day, Waltham Street, which is at their headquarters, 1:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. May 27, as previously noted, Memorial Day Parade, 10:00 a.m. Ceremony at the Wildwood Cemetery, 11:00 a.m. Town offices will be closed on that day. May 28 is the next Board of Selectmen's meeting, Room 9, at the Town Hall, 7:00 p.m. June 1, Fishing Derby, Town Beach, 9:00 a.m. to noon. Also on June 1, Boy Scout Troop 136 Yard Sale Fundraiser, Fourth of July Parking Lot, 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. June 2 is the Wilmington High School graduation, and June 6 is the Shawshin Tech graduation.
Thank you. Comes to the, ends at a meeting, or is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Selectman Samaglia, second by Selectman O'Connell. All those in favor? Unanimous.